Felt thanks to each member of the task force. Your generosity, your gifts of your honesty, of openness, your willingness to listen, the gift of your time. There have been multiple sessions and multiple meetings preparing for this and reading on the side. Your commitment to fairness and justice for all persons. On whatever side of the law, whatever side of law enforcement encounter, there was a spirit of fairness and generosity for all. And I have to say that the task force members were asked to refrain from advocating for any specific policy or procedural changes while the task forces were in, meetings were in session during the entire time of the task force. And frankly, we're not done yet, but we still want to come forward now. But that was necessary because we didn't want what we advocate for. And people have, and each, trust me, each member of the task force has very strong commitments to specific items and, and have had throughout, but they've, they've refrained from expressing those simply because we wanted those who came before us to bring their feelings, their passions, their ideas. And we, we did not want our own, it wasn't about us. We wanted to make it about what came to us. And we wanted to be in the role of facilitating the listening. And if we had gotten out and been, been in the role of advocacy throughout this, that might have forestalled some people coming forward. And that's not what we wanted to happen. So again, I want to thank each member of the task force for your generosity, for being out there, for being vulnerable in all this process. And in fact, sometimes just by being a part of this, you've been criticized. You've had people say to you, you're not doing anything, you're not doing enough. And yet I believe that you trusted the process, you trusted one another. And because of that spirit of generosity, we've been able to make some progress here. A special thanks to Commissioner Johnson for co-chairing. And Harold, you've got a second career as a facilitator. And, and it's, it's really been wonderful. I like to say you are the, the oil to the machine. And you really made it happen. Also thank Mr. Gordon Criswell, our assistant county administrator, who has done tremendous work behind the scenes, helping us respond to questions, digging in to questions that came to the task force from the community. And Gordon would dig in and make sure those questions were answered. I want to, special thanks to David Reno of our communications, public information, who did a lot of behind the scenes work, getting the word out, making sure YouTube and Facebook work. Also Mariah Smith, who also facilitated, we tried to put this out in as much media as possible to make it accessible to all. And then a special thanks to Anna Quimby, my assistant, who kept the, the task force on task. So if we could go to the first slide, Anna, the first slide. Next slide. So again, the, the long and short of this. Thank you. Really, the long and short of this is again, we want to make sure that our law enforcement personnel and our community are working together to improve public safety. And it's a, it's a cooperative effort. It's a collaborative effort. And so to that end, we wanted to have a diverse representation of our community. And so Commissioner Johnson is going to have an opportunity to introduce each of the members. I will just say you'll, Maximilian or Max Mendoza is the executive director of Heartland 180. And he unfortunately is not able to attend this evening because his agency has food to distribute and he's short staffed and he's got to get that food out tonight. So he is taking care of people tonight. And so his needs are in our thoughts and prayers. Next, please. We've had multiple community public forums. The first was regarding community policing, the use of body cameras. And that was by Chief York. These, these topics are important to us, you know, just what is the state of our community policing? And what is the status of the body cameras that the commission appropriated funding for in years past? And it's taken some time to get operational and we understood why that was. And I know Chief York is going to speak to, to body cameras and I believe Dr. Hill as well. We had another conversation about the use of force guidelines. What is current practice within our law enforcement community and the continuum of force? What is the, the status? What is the extent of, what types of training do all of our law enforcement personnel undergo? We had a request from the Concerned Black Clergy, multiple questions from them. And we tried to answer those questions. And there are more questions from them. We, we need some more clarification. We're trying to schedule a meeting. They had to cancel a meeting because there were a couple of funerals that the members had to attend to. But that's, that conversation is moving forward. We had a presentation by Monsignor Swetlin about restorative justice. I know he is going to highlight this. We had also representatives from the Village Initiative, which is an agency that tries to find a way to bring our returning citizens from incarceration. What specific problems do they face as they try to come back into our community and reestablish their, their lives in the community outside of incarceration? We, we tried to kind of take a tenor of where we were, progress made and moving forward. And in fact, we never got to that topic that night because Mr. Curtis Smart shared his own story with us in an encounter he had with police when he was younger, which wasn't that long ago, because he's not that old. And I have to say that that was, stimulated a tremendous amount of conversation and exploration by the members of the task force. And Curtis, again, I just want to say on behalf of all of us, thank you for, for sharing that with us. We understand how difficult that was for you to publicly tell that story. We also, in our last conversation, at the request of the county administrator and at the request of the community, we wanted to bring forward, you know, we're in the process of, Chief York is getting ready to retire. Congratulations. But the police hire, the, the chief hiring process has been suspended because of COVID. And the county administrator, Mr. Bach, asked us to elicit or solicit from the community what kinds of qualities and, and professional expertise they'd be looking for in a new chief. And also an opportunity to describe for the community, be transparent about what the process is that's going to be used as we move forward in hiring a new police chief. You'll notice we, we tried to find so many different forums to bring this forward. Zoom, UG, YouTube, the UGTV. We've sent notification flyers, social media ads in Spanish and English. We've sent notes out to some of the major anchor institutions in Wyandotte County, including El Centro and Metropolitan Organization to Counter Sexual Assault and others to, to seek input. We've got communication vehicles, a website or a place on the website and an email where we received multiple requests for information and, and others. So all of this has been a long process. And yet, as I'm going to emphasize, when we get to the end, we're not done. There are more topics to be explored. And ultimately, what we need to do is regularize a conversation, exploration, discussion about how to continually address issues that arise between policing and, and our community. Whatever those issues are, as we move forward, we have to find a way to continue to bring those into discussion, exploration, and to look at best practices to continually improve the opportunities for public safety. So having kind of just given that brief introduction, I'm going to pass it off to Commissioner Johnson. And we will then proceed into individual task force members. Thank you.
Great. Thank, thank you, Mayor, for that very thorough introduction. I appreciate the opportunity to serve alongside of you as the co-chair for this task force and for this, to, to deal with this, this issue that has plagued our society for far too long. And the things that we have discussed have been vital, you know, vital pieces of information. It's been a time of learning, a time of sharing, a time of being challenged. And some of the information that has been received has, has really kind of broadened my own personal understanding of, of the things that are occurring between law enforcement and the community. It's been a pleasure also to serve with this committee. And again, I want to express my appreciation for you, to you for volunteering your time to be a part of this. It has not been easy work, but I think it's been work that will help to shape the language of our community as relates to our ongoing relationships with, with our law enforcement agencies. You know, Wyandotte County is unique in that we haven't had the types of situations that have happened outside in our, in, in the, in the nation that we've, that we witnessed here in our community. But we want to make sure that we're being as vigilant as possible to make sure that those things don't happen. It's already been said, but I don't think it can be said enough. And so with that, I'm not going to belabor the time I know that we have until, what, what time are we, are we going to be done, Mayor, you imagine?
I would say six forty-five, six fifty at the very latest.
Okay, very good. Then we want to go ahead and get, get started. Again, we've asked each one of the members of the task force to share their observations, to share their recommendations, their thoughts of their time on the task force with the commission and the community at large that may be watching. And so with that, we're going to start with the right Reverend Tony Carter. If you could just introduce yourself and then share with us your observations as it relates to your work with the task force. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, and thank you, Mayor. Good evening to all. And again, thank you to the mayor and to the county commissioners and the community of Wyandotte County for the opportunity to serve the people of our yet evolving community. And I say that I'm Pastor Tony Carter of the Salem Missionary Baptist Church, where I serve as senior pastor and have since 2002. I say that our community is evolving because I believe that this county is on the brink of greatness. And in my humble opinion, the brightest or the biggest barriers revolve around historic disparities concerning health and wellness, economic growth and opportunities, and the continued plight related to systemic racism, which has plagued our community and the African-American and other black and brown people in our community. I fully expect that we shall reach our potential as we continue to work together with God. And having said that, I'm reminded of a statement I read, read from Pope Francis, who once said, and I quote, "A way has to be found to enable everyone to benefit from the fruits of the earth and not simply to close the gap between the affluent and those who must be satisfied with the crumbs falling from the table, but above all, to satisfy the demands of justice, fairness, and respect for every human being." And I believe that wholeheartedly. Several months ago, after observing the senseless death of another black American play out on television screen, communities all over this country were awakened to a level of consciousness that had not been experienced before in my recent memory. And in the midst of many upheavals and protests, the mayor formed the Community and Policing Relations Task Force, which were tasked with listening to our community and facilitating the conversation regarding policing community relations. And while we committed to be primarily listeners, that is hard to do and not also see things that motivate you to offer recommendations that also facilitate improvements in the process, but also eventually lead to substantive impactful change. In other words, to satisfy, satisfy the demands of justice, fairness, and respect for every human being. I've learned a lot through this process and my emotions have spanned the gamut from absolute anger to holding back tears. Initially, I put a lot of pressure on myself to deliver for my community, and I mean all of my community, until I realized it was going to take a collective collaboration of each person on this task force to point this work in the right direction. I got to see those synergies come together and I felt the breath of God validate some incremental steps in the right direction that can form the basis for the real life change that needs to happen within these systems of government, law enforcement, and our community as a whole. But there is still much work left to do to affect real change. For example, the Eight Can't Wait Initiative that many shall probably refer to tonight, that our police department has recently began to embrace, is a step in the right direction. However, it still leaves much work to be done. The eight proposed policies are banning chokeholds and strangulations, requiring de-escalation, requiring warning before shooting, requiring officers to exhaust all alternatives before shooting, imposing a duty to intervene, banning shooting at moving vehicles, establishing a use of force continuum, and requiring comprehensive reporting. These eight policy changes, if implemented, is said to reduce police killings by 72%. But the flaw of Eight Can't Wait and all police reform efforts is an inability to control for prejudiced officers, bad tempered officers, or very real possibility that an officer may simply break the rules, as did Derek Chauvin in Minneapolis. And even if an officer is prosecuted and convicted, and I do say if, death is irreversible. We cannot bring George Floyd back. We cannot bring Breonna Taylor back, and so on and so forth. There's still, again, much work to do. The funding of our district attorney, District Attorney's Community Integrity Unit was a step in the right direction. However, there is still much work to do. And what happens when the politic changes and the funding goes away, there's still much work to do. We can feel promises to do better and to remain vigilant, but even as I speak, there are those who vehemently disagree with me. Some will say that we've already done enough. Still, others will say we haven't even come close to doing nearly enough. There's still so much work to do. In Exodus three, chapter three, verse nine, God says to Moses, "The cry of the children of Israel has come to me, and I have seen the oppression which, with which the Egyptians oppressed them." Then in verse 10, he, God, says, "Come now, literally go now, therefore, and I will send you to Pharaoh that you may bring my people out of Egypt." I'm done when I say this. God says to everyone in the room, everyone on the call, and everyone in this community, "Go now that you may bring my people out of injustices of all kind." As recommendations, that we remain diligent and committed to this great work by any and all means necessary, that the commission empower some entity, be it the Law Enforcement Advisory Board or the task force itself, to propose substantive solutions to deal with wholeheartedly the problems of systemic racism, police brutality, and other disparities that adds to these plagues in our communities so that my grandbabies and your grandbabies can live in a safe community that satisfies the demands of justice, fairness, and respect for every human being. Thank you. That ends my comments.
Thank you, Reverend. Well stated. I appreciate it. And, and you said it in your preacher voice. And so I appreciate that. And we all are, are better for it. Thank you so much. We're going to now hear from Ms. Urelle Castor, one of our, she might be our youngest member, I, I dare say. But her voice, although she's quiet, has really, really helped us a lot and informed us a lot. Urelle?
Hello, everyone. I'm Urelle Castor. I am a graduate from Donnelly College and I'm still a student now at Rockers University. And I want to say thank you to our mayor and commissioner and the community task force. It's been really great work, working with all of you. And I want to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to be a member of this task force. I know you kind of quoted what I was going to say, Commissioner. I believe I am the youngest one in this group. And yes, a lot of times you didn't see me asking a lot of questions or making comments. And ultimately, it was because I was taking the part of being an active listener really seriously. Because, like I said, we each all have ideas and things that we stand for. And I didn't want any of that to get in the way of, of, you know, what we're trying to do here. With that being said, listening to what our community members were saying and each individual who presented throughout this time, one thing that I noticed that was when I first came here, I had, I knew that there were, our community had frustration and feeling of anger toward our law enforcement. I didn't know the magnitude of it, but I knew that it was there. However, what I didn't know was the perspective from our law enforcement. I didn't, I, through social media and news outlets was what I was receiving, my source of information. And in a way, it made me have a certain view of our law, law enforcement here in Wyandotte County. That wasn't true. I, I, I perceived them as not caring and not doing enough for our community. But coming here and listening to the concerns of the community and of our law enforcement made me realize that my information was wrong from both perspectives. Like I said, I didn't know the magnitude and listening to the stories, I was like, this, this is a huge concern. And we have been crying out for help, or individuals have for a long time. And even though it may seem that we're starting to talk about this conversation, it may seem too late. But however, I'm really glad that this conversation is going because it needs to. However, like I was saying, I didn't, didn't know the magnitude of the situation and the perspective of the, of the law enforcement, what they presented, their policies, their, the type of training that they receive, the type of work that they do, that it's not just catching the bad guys, made me realize that they ultimately do have the desire to serve our community, do have the desire to protect us. And although in our social media, our news outlet sometimes changes that, it makes us see that, oh, in our community, Wyandotte County is just like every other state, when thankfully, it's not, it's not as bad. However, it is, it is as bad for us to start to do something about it now. My, as I was saying, listening to the community and questions that came in, I saw a lot of comments through individuals who expressed anger and I, these ideas that were ultimately answered and no, that's actually not what we do. That we do have a policy in place that addresses that. And if you do have an issue, you can come forward. And, and we do have someone who listens to your complaints, who has them reported. I felt that a lot of individuals did not even know that that even existed, that they couldn't even come forward, that they couldn't. And it has to do also with the lack of trust that they have with law enforcement. However, I heard time and time again, questions or comments that were later addressed and saying, no, that's actually not true. This is the truth. So there was a lack of communication from both sides, our community with their law enforcement and law enforcement with the community, each other. And ultimately, my, what my recommendation would be is that we do, we need to do a much better job of informing the community of this type of, everything that we presented, the use of force, the training, all of that needs to be presented and given to the community, not just through a flyer, not just through an email, not just to, in one language. Wyandotte County is so diverse and needs to be given to each community member in their language that they understand. And like I said, not just through flyers, not through just a post, not everybody has Facebook, not everybody has, you know, those means. So like I said, it changed my, my view of viewing my law enforcement here in my community and knowing that they do so much more. And all of that was impacted by the Citizens Academy and as well as his presentation. I was, I felt much more informed to have an actual conversation. I, I'm not the type of person who likes to comment unless I know the situation or I'm aware of it. However, as a community member, going to this informed me a lot that I was able to come back and, and actually talk about it with individuals and say, did you know that this happened? Did you know that they're not just about catching the bad guys, that they're actually helping the homelessness crisis that we have here? The lack of buildings to hold, to host these type of people, like they do so much more. So ultimately, that really hit home to me is that all of this information is there, it's available for us, but we don't really know about it. Ultimately, I know my time is almost up, is to, we, we need to do a much better job of communicating this type of information to our community here in Wyandotte County and to do it in a way that is accessible to everybody, not just to an email, a Facebook post in one language. Like I said, it's very diverse. um, in one language, like I said, it's very diverse and we need to make sure that if reaching those people who we ultimately have not been reaching, um, uh, till today. Um, and that's all I'm gonna say, because I know we have a lot other people to listen to. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, uh, finally, I guess if you hit the microphone enough times, it'd finally go off, so, um, thank you, Ureli. Uh, your words were, were very, very timely, and I appreciate that and really, uh, brought some good light to the, some things that we have, uh, that we have, uh, experienced here, uh, and that we need to do better, a better job of in Wyandotte County. Uh, we're going to hear from our sheriff, uh, right now, Sheriff Don Ash, uh, who will present his, uh, observations and comments at this particular time. Thank you. And, uh, Sheriff Ash is in your hands.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Uh, first of all, I want to say thank you to all of the fellow task force members here. Um, all of the citizen soldiers, so to speak, that volunteered and signed up, uh, to be on the task force. Um, your thoughtful questions, comments, and interaction have been greatly beneficial uh, to me as leader in the sheriff's office. And I also want to thank the members of the community that took time to email a question or to send in a, a comment or a video or, uh, provide the feedback that they provided. Um, you really did a great job characterizing, uh, what it was that we were able to get a feel that what really was the thorn in the side of, uh, members of our community, and that's, uh, greatly beneficial. In the interest of not being redundant to what Chief York's going to present in a little while, um, I'll just tell you that, uh, just about everything that Chief is going to share, if the sheriff's office is right along in line with that and lockstep with, uh, the information he can share in almost every point, point by point. And so, um, outside of that, I just want to say a couple of other things that I'm really, committed to following through on, uh, are the points about the, uh, better wellness, uh, for our police officers and our sheriff's deputies that are serving on the front line out there, ways that we can, um, monitor them, ways that we can make available services and assistance to them, uh, as they seek ways to cope and deal with the high stressors of this job. We're gonna be doing some more work on that. We're gonna be looking at some alternatives for that in the very, uh, near future. Also want to explore this idea a little bit more in that same vein of making periodic mandatory, um, psychological wellness evaluations available and required, if you will, for all of those particularly that serve on a front line somewhere in, in this work. Um, I think that a time has come for that, and I'd like to, to have some conversations with human resources and, and legal and, um, county administrators, staff about how, what that might look like here for the unified government. Uh, so we're committed to that. We're also looking internally at the sheriff's office, uh, to form, we have a peer support team in order to help assist with those kinds of things. But we're also looking to form a, um, diversity, equity, and inclusion team, if you will, that would be a, a group of individuals that are specially selected and highly trained in order to, uh, be the, the sonar, if you will, uh, out there searching or watching or monitoring our work environment uh, for individual deputies, uh, in, in, in frontline workers that might be experiencing, um, either some discriminatory, uh, behavior toward them or attitudes toward them, or somebody that feels like possibly they're being marginalized within their work group. They would be able to go to one of these, um, specialized, uh, team members and at least open that conversation and dialogue so that we could begin to, to look at how we need to best respond and, and deal with those things. And of course, we're constantly, uh, looking at ways to improve on our defensive actions and uses of force and our policies. There's some other equipment that's recently become available in order to be able to assist us with less lethal, less invasive, um, you know, types of things, things like a, a conducted energy device called the glove, um, that we could utilize in particular instances, especially inside the detention center. And then also a device called a bola wrap, uh, which would, uh, work similar to a taser in that it would deploy, um, a cord wrap that would wrap around and immobilize people's hands and their legs so that officers and deputies then could move in and handcuff or control folks without having to tase them um, and without having to use some of the other less lethal or certainly lethal methods. And, uh, so that's fairly new technology that's becoming, uh, readily available now in law enforcement. We're investigating it further and looking for ways that we might be able to incorporate that into our policy. So I, like Ureli, uh, saw, found my role to be mostly listening and not talking. And so, um, I'm still listening. And with that, Commissioner, I'm gonna yield the rest of my time, uh, to Chief York. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, uh, uh, Sheriff. I appreciate, uh, uh, those comments and, and even with some of the things that, um, the alternative methods, when I saw the little straps that you shot, it reminded me of an episode of Batman when I was, uh, younger and I would watch TV. Uh, so I guess we're moving, moving into the age of the superheroes, I suppose, uh, with that. So, uh, thank you for those comments. We really appreciate it. Uh, next, we're going to hear from Mr. Curtis Smart, who's going to, uh, come at, at this particular time. Curtis, sit in your hands.
Hello. Um, I would first like to say I am Curtis Smart. Um, and I, uh, recently graduated from the University of Kansas Medical System with my Master's in Public Health Administration, and I have enjoyed being a part of this task force. It has been a wealth of knowledge for me, um, and it's also been an eye-opener for me. Um, because I did not know that our police were as good as they are. I didn't know how phenomenal our police are in our neighborhoods and our surrounding areas. Um, so first I would like to say, thank you to everyone for allowing me to be a part of this task force, um, and that I believe in our police department and their ability to uphold the law. I also believe in our citizens and our county to obey the law. I would like to offer a few suggestions, um, and I'll be very brief tonight. My first suggestion would be to push funding for body cams. I feel that with body cams, we would be able to protect the rights of our citizens and the police. Um, and I feel that it would help, um, with the current crises that are helping, I mean, that are going on across our nation. Um, with body cams, we, there won't be, uh, like, two sides of the story. It'll be the story that was told on film. Um, and I also would make a suggestion for funding psychological examination of officers who have had traumatic experiences in our community. Um, we, we spend a lot of time talking about how officers, um, make these rash decisions, but we, we don't, I don't believe that I've seen too many, uh, officers have that psychological examination or have access to psychological help or as much help as they may need. Um, we're in a wake of a, a time and place where we are talking about mental health. Um, and mental health is very important, especially for our officers in our community who see things on a daily basis that the average person probably doesn't see. Um, so building, uh, building programs around psychological examination for officers, I think, would really, really help. Um, and then my last suggestion would be, from my observations and working with the task force, would be to help fund programs like DARE, um, to put officers out in front of youth and young adults that are in school and ma- making them realize that the police aren't bad, um, and also building that relationship with local officers. I can remember growing up in my neighborhood and going to school and seeing officers come to my school and then that weekend going to the skating rink and seeing that same officer know my name. Um, and if I did something and got out of line, that officer could call my parents. He, he didn't necessarily have to detain me or tase me or anything, because he knew my parents. Um, and building that type of rapport within our community again would be great because what it does, it, it creates a, a trust and value system, not just amongst the citizens, but also amongst our officers and our fellow officers. Um, and what I think in the long run will happen is when a person is younger and they grow up knowing police, there's a certain respect level that comes with that. Um, and I think in some ways, citizens have lost respect for police and law enforcement, and law enforcement has lost respect for citizens in the way they handle law enforcement. Um, so repairing that relationship, I believe, would be, um, this would be a part of repairing that relationship. And I would close with saying, um, I love this favorite, this is one of my favorite quotes. Um, Helen Keller says, "The only thing worse than being blind is having sight with no vision." And I feel like we're moving into a space where we have a clear vision and a clear view of what we want to do. Now it's how we take those initial steps to get where we want to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. Thank you. Okay, there we go. Thank you, Curtis. I appreciate, I just had to take a breath. Uh, it's, it's, uh, maybe it's late at night, I don't know. Anyway, uh, I appreciate those comments and, and the work of reconci- reconciliation, I think, is, is, is what I really took away, uh, that, uh, presents a great opportunity, uh, for us in, in this community, uh, that we live in. Uh, at this time, we're going to hear from our chief right now, Chief of Police, uh, Chief Michael York is going to come. I think he has a presentation that he'll be submitting to us as well. Chief is in your hands.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anna, do you go, are you going to put up the, uh, PowerPoint? You want me to share my screen?
If you can show your screen, Chief, that would be great. Thank you.
All right. Let's see if I can do it here. Do you guys see anything?
Yes.
Are you seeing my screen?
Yes.
Your PowerPoint.
Yes, it's not, it's not maximized, but who am I? I can't even push a microphone, so.
Okay. I think I can figure this out. How about that?
There you go.
Okay. Uh, okay, so before I get started, I just want to say, uh, uh, to the task force, uh, thank you for, uh, challenging me. Uh, I've learned a lot. Uh, I've made some changes to the police department because of, uh, what the task force has suggested. Uh, so I thank you guys for that. Um, so let me, uh, start with this PowerPoint here. My first slide, shortly after the George Floyd incident, uh, Trump signed the executive order for safe policing for safe communities. Uh, I want to go over these and explain them to you. The first order would be that departments must assess and approve their practices and policies to, to ensure, uh, safe and capable delivery of law enforcement services to the communities. We are in compliance with that. We have a policy, policy review every week. Uh, we update our general orders monthly, uh, if not weekly, and we work with the legal department and, uh, our policy review as well. Uh, number two, departments must adhere to independent, uh, uh, bodies. So we do have that. We are in compliance. We are, um, certified through Kalia, which stands for Certified Accredited Law Enforcement Agency. So number three, departments must utilize a body that sets standards in use of force, de-escalation, early warning, things like that. So we are, again, in compliance through the participation in Kalia. And, uh, we also have, when it comes to officers, we have an early warning system. Uh, we are actually getting a new system up and running. It is called IA Pro, which tracks our officers. What I mean by tracks our officers, it tracks their discipline. It tracks their uses of force. It tracks their vehicle accidents. It tracks, uh, sick leave. So if all those things are being tracked, we can determine when an officer maybe is struggling uh, in an area, so, uh, we can, uh, easily, uh, be alerted of that and take positive action. So, uh, number four, departments must prohibit the use of chokeholds. We don't have a chokehold. Uh, we've never had a chokehold. Uh, we've had various neck restraints, but the never a, a chokehold. I'll go into that more in detail. We also must create a database to coordinate sharing of information regarding excessive force, uh, terminations of law enforcement officers, criminal convictions, uh, things like that. So that is pending. We are working with the KBI. They are creating a database. I have Major George Sims as part of that group. He meets with the KBI, uh, routinely, and they are going to create a database, basically tracking everything that number five is asking us to do. And number six, departments must properly train all officers for encounters with individuals who suffer from impaired mental health, homelessness, things like that. So we are out of compliance. However, we have eighty-five percent of our police department trained on that. Uh, every recruit that goes through the academy is trained, um, to deal with people that are suffering from some type of, uh, mental illness. So the two things that I've changed since the George Floyd incident was the shoulder pin. As you can see by looking at that picture, that is a shoulder pin. Uh, I changed that to where the officers can only use the shoulder pin when they are fighting for their lives, when they are at lethal force. Uh, prior to the George Floyd incident, we could use a shoulder pin when the officers were being attacked. Now I've moved it to where an officer is at deadly force, is the only time you can use the shoulder pin. Uh, the side of neck, we have what we call a brachial stun. Um, the officers can use a brachial stun, which basically is you, you use your palm and you strike the side of a person's neck, which stuns them. I've, I've changed that as well. Uh, if an officer is being physically attacked, being beaten, he can use the brachial stun. So what, like you really said, it's not all about catching a bad guy. So this is what every recruit goes through. Every officer that enters into our academy goes through these types of training. Uh, so, uh, there's, there's a lot more to than just trying to catch the bad guy, as you can see. Every officer that is working the streets every year, they have what we call AOT, which is called Advanced Officer Training. They get by-space policing, de-escalation, cultural awareness, and dealing with special populations. So again, we are constantly training our officers on how to, uh, deal with certain situations. So again, we are constantly training our officers on how to, uh, deal with certain situations, how to de-escalate, uh, how to be aware with di- different cultures, things like that. So this is the biggest thing that I have done. We've got to have a duty to intervene policy. So I have sent a lot of my commanders to training. They're going to change our general order. Our general order currently states this for code of ethics. An officer will not engage in acts of corruption or bribery, bribery, nor will an officer condone such acts by other officers. Well, that's not as clear as I would like it. So I really believe if Minneapolis Police Department would have had a duty to intervene policy, the George Floyd incident would not have happened. So each officer, and I'm not talking just about officers, I'm talking about sergeants, captains, majors and above. They're going to be trained in duty to intervene policy. So when an officer gets caught up in a situation, gets over-invested in the situation, the sergeant, the other officer on the scene has a duty to intervene. So, um, I can tell you this. I haven't implemented this just yet, but I'm going to have a ten code. So when an officer is emotionally over-invested and the other officer sees that, he's going to say ten, whatever that code would be, ten-six, ten-six, which means you need to slow down, you need to back off. So, um, and this is just not officer to officer. This is officer to sergeant, sergeant to captain. We all have a, a duty to intervene. So that's going to be implemented, uh, shortly. And like, uh, Curtis said, we do have a wellness program. We do have a peer support team. I have an officer here that works at the chief's office and that is all she does is, um, she goes to roll calls, she goes to the academy. Um, when officers are struggling, she reaches out to them. Uh, she gives them resources, things like that. So, uh, we do have that. Could we improve upon that? Yeah, this is relatively new for twenty-twenty and it's gone over quite well. We've had a spouses academy. We have a mentoring program. We've even gone so far as a comfort dog. We have two comfort animals that visit the roll calls, uh, they interact with the officers. Once they graduate, the dogs graduate their, their training, what will take them out to the community. And this is my, really my, uh, my last slide for the most part. Uh, I will tell you, I believe this wholeheartedly. This is the reason why we had nothing but peaceful protests. Because we have done community policing since nineteen ninety-five. We have a standalone full-time community policing unit, which twenty officers, as you can see, are engaging the community throughout the entire KCK area. Uh, so, you know, we have, we have our pal. We have resource officers. We have a juvenile program. We have an OK officer that goes out to the schools. And this is, you know, thirty some years or close to thirty years of doing nothing but positive engagement with the community. And that's why I believe we did not see any type of civil unrest, uh, during the George Floyd protests. And these are just a few of the programs that they do day in and day out. There's probably ten here. I'm sure we have about twenty more. So go to schools, we talk to the kids, we read to the kids, uh, we have pizza with the kids, we play basketball with the kids. Uh, so we are out there engaging not just the community, but the, the youth as well. And that's basically what they do is community engagement. And that, uh, Commissioner is, is all I have.
Well, that's quite a lot, Chief, and I appreciate you for bringing light to, uh, some of the things that the police department is, is doing. Uh, you all are doing a modifying job. I, 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 I don't think it is, um, it needs to be, we need, continue to be aware of the fact that we've not had any, uh, issues when we had the, uh, peaceful protests. Um, every community cannot say that. And so we are, uh, the beneficiaries of the work of our police department here in Wyandotte County. We thank you for, you and the sheriff, uh, for being, uh, part of this dialogue and hearing and listening uh, to the concerns of your fellow, uh, persons that are on the, on the task force as well as those that are in the community. Um, we're going to hear now from Dr. Evelyn Hill, who I believe has a presentation, uh, tonight. And so we're excited to hear, uh, her presentation. Dr. Hill is in your hands.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Johnson, and thank you, Mayor, and all the commissioners for being with us on this evening. And thank you to the community for, you have, uh, been very active in listening, uh, so we certainly appreciate you. Uh, and to my fellow task force, uh, members, thank you also. Uh, I, I too have learned a lot. Um, I am very appreciative of those who've taken the time to really explain some things, uh, to help me and the community understand law enforcement, uh, a, a lot better. So I, I do want to say thank you for that. Okay, let's go to my, uh, first slide, uh, which says my recommendation. Uh, the next slide. Okay, so here are my recommendations. Add eight can't wait on the police department website, which I thought would be an excellent uh, opportunity to show some transparency on the part of the police department. And I've heard from, um, interim chief York that he does plan to put it on his website. So I'm really excited about that. Also add the use of force policy on the KCK police, uh, uh, department website is another, uh, recommendation that I added. Uh, and then number three, deploy monitor and audit body cameras for police officers. And then number four, reform the no-knock warrant procedures. And number five, reform bail protocols for the poor. Okay, let's go to the next slide. So when we began to talk to, uh, interim chief York about eight can't wait, he, uh, immediately sent back the protocols that the police department here in KCK had already put in place, which I was very excited. I did look at, um, other websites throughout the community and, uh, saw that eight can't, uh, wait was already uh, on their website. And so, uh, to know that Chief York and Lisa had already started working on this with his, uh, department. And now he has said he's willing to put that on our website. It's very exciting. So Olaf has already done it over in Park, uh, police department as well as Wichita. Wichita was, uh, the most comprehensive I saw. They had a whole section on what they're doing in the community around, uh, unbiased, um, and fair community policing. So, uh, I learned a lot, just, uh, my own personal research. And I think, uh, another part where I found out was that on the Missouri side, don't quote me on this. I don't think they've done, uh, the work that the Kansas City, Kansas Police Department has done. So I appreciate the efforts that KCK Police Department is doing. Next slide. Uh, the use of force policy on the, uh, KCK Police Website. I noticed, um, right off the bat, uh, many people, uh, uh, contacted me and from the community about transparency from the police department. And one case had to do with this individual's, uh, death. Uh, who, um, uh, one of the community members said, uh, that this individual was killed by the hands of police officers and there was no guns involved. And, uh, the gentleman said the same words as George Floyd, I can't breathe. So, uh, as we have heard already, the police have already began to do some major changing. And hopefully, uh, this is in the past and we can move forward. Um, uh, and the good news was the families were compensated and, uh, but you can never bring back the life. But, uh, I appreciate, uh, what we're trying to do. When I say we, I mean, the police department is doing now to, uh, uh, do things different, uh, to alleviate racial profiling and, uh, to also get rid of any police injustices, uh, that are out there from the past. And so there's been so much talk about a retired officer, uh, um, and some of the issues that have not been addressed. And it looked like the police just let him get away with some of the atrocities that he had been doing. Um, and I'm not calling any names, but I can say this with, um, the opportunity to hear from others, we did find out that possibly, uh, if it's under investigation with FBI and the KBI, well, then there is going to be no conversations about it. Because, uh, you, they just don't discuss anything that's, uh, um, in court. Okay, the next slide. Um, uh, we've heard a couple of people already mention the, the body cameras. Uh, so I'm excited to know that we are moving forward. We're getting the body cameras. I think we're at a point now where it's time to just do it and, and not talk about it anymore. Just get it done. Okay, next slide. Uh, reform on the no-knock warrant procedures. Uh, many of you know about the, uh, case where, uh, Breonna Taylor was, was killed by police. They had the no-knock warrant. And of course, it's he said, she said stuff. Uh, they said, well, we did announce we, where we had on the plane clothes, so forth and so on. So it's some things that can be eliminated. They just wore the uniforms, if they just wore the badges and announced the entry. Those are just real easy things that can be done. And, uh, the Breonna Taylor incident was very, uh, very troubling because they didn't even have the right address. And, uh, so the whole thing was botched. Um, and still, uh, I don't think the police officers were necessarily, uh, done justice as far as, uh, if, if they did kill the young lady, which in fact they did. There were so many other protocols. What I saw, who I saw get charged was, uh, one of the police officers that shot in another, in another, uh, apartment close by. So anyway, that is just, uh, uh, my view of the no-knock warrant. These are, uh, things in my view, and I'm just a citizen. Uh, these are things in my view that are easy enough to fix, that could at least, uh, uh, make some positive changes in our community. Next slide. Uh, reform, uh, bail protocols for the pure, poor. Uh, so, uh, I've already talked to both interim chief York and Sheriff Ash. And many of those who would possibly be in jail now due to COVID, uh, many things have already changed. So I, I applaud them both for, for making some different protocols, uh, and not, uh, incarcerating as many individuals as they were formerly. And for the work that they're doing with, uh, Windout Center for those who have mental health issues. So, uh, there are, there is some more work that can be done with, uh, the reform on bail. Uh, but I have seen some work started, so thank you for that. And the next slide. Uh, special thank you to interim chief, uh, York for adding the complaint section on the KCK, uh, Police Department Website. Curtis, uh, Smart, uh, indicated that uh, he had been pulled over, uh, just because he had a nice car. That was what he said. But it was in a high crime area and he was just leaving a community meeting. But what was interesting was the questions that came from our law enforcement was, well, did you file a complaint? Well, did you, did you go in and file a complaint? And, and I love what Curtis said. He goes, man, I was just trying to get home. I just was, I didn't have nothing on my mind. If I could just get home. Well, now they have the opportunity to make a complaint. If they're pulled over, you can go online, thanks to Chief York, and make a complaint. It can, you can put your name on it. It can be by, uh, telephone, online. It can be, um, uh, it can be done. Where in the past, you, you had to go in, you can, you, you can even make an anonymous complaint. So I appreciate him, uh, and his team putting that, uh, on the website. And thank you, uh, Chief York for hosting the task force to the Citizen Police Academy. I had no idea how much information is out there that they do, but it was a, a great experience for me. And I want to say to all of the great police officers, thank you for putting your lives on the line every day for us. And congratulations to all those who won awards this year. I watched your, uh, program on your website. And so thank you to the police officers. Next slide. This is my final slide. Thank you to, um, uh, Sheriff Ash. Uh, his feedback, uh, was very informative, uh, on several different points. One in particular was some insights he shared with us concerning the body camera. And, uh, I really appreciated him helping us understand the difference between the work of the sheriff's department and the work also of the, uh, police department and, and how they are different. Uh, one of the things that the community was very upset about was that the district attorney's office was not a part of the, um, task force. Uh, and so I still, um, uh, am grateful that we did get to hear from the, um, uh, DA's office. He made a presentation at our first task force meeting, so that was good. But many of them, uh, in the community were still very concerned that he was not a part of the task force. Just want to say thank you again. I, I do have, uh, one quick, uh, verse I'd like to read. Proverbs thirty-one, eight and nine. Speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves, for the rights of all who are destitute. Speak up and judge fairly. Defend the right of the poor. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill, for that thorough, uh, presentation. We appreciate, uh, your work on the, on the, uh, task force as well. And your, uh, candor, uh, has been very beneficial to, to us all. So thank you, uh, for that. Um, at this time, we're going to hear from Monsignor, uh, Stuart Swetland, uh, president of Donnelly College. Monsignor's in your hands.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I want to thank everybody involved in this. It has been, uh, both educational and informative, but also I think, uh, a good step in the right direction as we build a more just and caring community. Um, I have the advantage of going towards the end, so I can say ditto to a lot of what's already happened. Uh, and I'm going to ask for the first slide to be brought up. This task force, as we heard the mayor said, was, uh, a proactive response on his part uh, after the death, the, uh, the murder of George Floyd. And, uh, we want to thank him and others for having that proactive response. Uh, next slide, please. That proactive response has led to a, a, a host of, uh, things already being improved and bettered in our community. Uh, you just heard, uh, at least seven of them, uh, laid out in the previous presentations. Uh, the community integrity unit in the DA's office, the duty to intervene policy that you heard from Chief York, uh, the less lethal devices and techniques being employed by Sheriff Ash. Uh, the internal affairs complaint button that in a discussion, uh, at the task force, that's now right there on the front page. Uh, if you go to the police department's website, uh, body cams coming and the software and, and implementation of those for the next, uh, calendar year, uh, the changes in the use of force, uh, rules, uh, clarifying and getting, uh, more community buy-in to, uh, those. And the eight can't wait. Um, uh, all of that is already steps in the right direction. But there are longstanding issues in our community and we have to be honest about these. And two of them right away is the, are we listening and are we being heard? At first, it was difficult for us to get the community to trust us enough just to even make submissions. Eventually, the, a couple few- Eventually, a couple few people really primed the pump, and then we got, started to get a deluge, which is good. But I think a lot of people in our community are still wondering, are we listening? Are we being heard? And when I presented these to some of my staff, they said, well, who's the we in this questioning? And that's my point mainly. We are the we, all of us. Mother Teresa of Calcutta, who in the Catholic tradition is now a canonized saint, she used to answer the question, what's wrong with the world with this response? We have just forgotten that we belong to one another. And we here in Windot County, we belong to one another, and therefore, we must listen to one another. And we must speak to one another candidly and openly and be willing to engage in constructive extended conversations. And that's what the task force has begun, and I think it is just a beginning. Because we have to listen, as we have tried to, to the police. They have an important position and view to give us. We have to listen to our elected officials. But we also have to listen to all the citizens from all the different groups, as Yurili said, different language groups, different backgrounds, different histories and different experiences. Some of which, and we have to be honest about this, in the past have been quite unjust. And that has to be admitted. And we might need some kind of a system where we can face those kinds of past injustices, perhaps like in places like South Africa that had Truth and Reconciliation Commission to honestly confront and speak about those past injustices, some of them not that far in the past. Next slide, please. Our concerns, in addition to these communication issues, which will be an ongoing reality for our community, and I hope the commissioners continue to want to have these kind of constructive extended conversations, is we have to work to build trust in our community between the various groups. And that won't happen unless we all feel that we're being heard and that we can speak openly and honestly. And part of that is our police force, still in its makeup, does not reflect the community that it serves. And it serves it well in almost every case. But we need to do much better as a community in having a police force and other first responders that reflect the community in which they serve. And that is proactive recruiting and proactive promoting of people from different backgrounds, different language groups, different ethnicities, different genders. So part of the concern that we continue to have, though, is that some of the rules that make change very difficult in our community. My church and I personally are very pro-union. But when unions stand in the way of keeping progress from happening, we have to address that. And if union rules have to be changed to allow our police and other first responders to reflect more what the community looks like, then we need to address that. I am very concerned and always, partly because I teach it, partly because I have a military background. I was an officer, a naval officer before I became a priest. And one of my academic specialties is the questions of the ethics of the use of force. I'm concerned that the rules of the use of force, that there's widespread community buy-in to the rules of force that the police operate under. And I think the commissioners should periodically review those use of force criteria and make sure by vote, recorded vote, that they agree with them. So we know that the community voice is being heard on the use of force. I'm very skeptical of the increased militarization of police forces that we see in other parts of the country. I would not want to see that happen here. I can think of very few occasions that we would ever need to use indiscriminate types of weapons here in Windot County. Particularly, I'm worried about the use of tear gas and things like that. From my military background, we could not use that kind of weaponry. It's been banned by the Geneva Conventions for good reason. And I think we want to make sure, whatever the use of force rules are that the police are operating on here in Windot County, that the greater community has seen them, agreed to them in advance, and that there have been recorded votes assenting to those rules. Next slide, please. I believe as a community, and this is not for the police to take the lead on. This is for us as a community to take the lead on. We heard some stirring testimony from various groups about the success here and nationwide for implementing programs and practices of restorative justice, especially for those who have an early contact, if you will, with the criminal justice system. Those who are struggling because they come out of poverty or out of communities that historically have had bad relationships with law enforcement, that restorative justice practices can save our community not only a great deal of resources, but reclaim lives that might otherwise get caught up in that spiral of criminal justice, punitive criminal justice approaches that help neither the individual nor the community. And especially restorative justice practices restore relationships and take into consideration the plight of whoever's been victimized by an injustice. And I think we need that on a wider scale for a host of areas. But that will take community buy-in on a large scale. Next slide, please. I do believe we ask our police to do way too much. Just like we're asking our schools, our public schools, to do way too much. They should be about education, not about all the social services we ask our schools to take the lead on. We're asking our police to do way too much. They often are the first point of contact with the government when it comes to homelessness, addiction, mental illness, and people in poverty. For example, evictions and things like that. And I think it's asking too much for people we train to be law enforcement officials and representatives and practitioners to also be able to handle all the social services that are involved with dealing with poverty and homelessness and addiction and mental illness and a host of other things. But that means we, as a community, need to commit, and the commissioners need to help us commit, to providing an increase in social services that will help decriminalize poverty, decriminalize homelessness, decriminalize a drug and alcohol addiction, and decriminalize mental illness. Way too many people that fall into those categories end up in our criminal justice system when good social services would have saved us all and helped them be raised up as a community. And I think we all suffer because when one part of the body of the community suffers, all suffer. When one person is successful, we all share in that success. Next slide, please. Our accomplishments so far are many, especially, I think, we've begun to open the lines of communication. We've seen these wonderful change. I call it rules of engagement from my military background, but the use of force rules and all the other things that we have discussed, these are great steps. And I commend everybody for their willingness to humbly be willing to change when mere civilians bring up points of view. So I appreciate it. Next slide, please. But we have much more that still needs to be done, and we need long-term citizen involvement. We've talked about various ways that can happen. There's already existing structures that perhaps can be strengthened and empowered. Both, they'll have to be strengthened and empowered to represent the citizens in their dialogue and in their review of what our police and other first responders are doing. We need that long-term buy-in and long-term citizen involvement on this and many other issues. And I'm just happy to play a small role in helping us maybe make a step forward in that direction. So thanks for everyone involved with the task force, the police, and the greater community for all of your submissions and input. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Monsignor, for, again, that wonderful presentation. Again, it was very thorough, as have been all of the presentations tonight. You know, the word that just jumped out at me at the latter part of your presentation was long-term. And this is a long-term problem. It's going to take a long-term solution. We've been at this just for a few months. And the work that we've done, I think, has been positive, and we've moved in the right direction. But we have to have a long-term mindset if we're going to adequately address the issues that are plaguing our community. I consider this to be a pandemic, a social, civil pandemic of sorts. And the things that have been outlined tonight from our task force members speak to those issues. And just as we talk about the pandemic with regards to COVID-19, we still have to continue to work on remedies, vaccines for our community that will help to alleviate and erase centuries of bias and centuries of discrimination that we've endured across our nation that has infiltrated even into our community. Again, I think that we're moving in the right direction. I appreciate the work of every person on this task force. I appreciate Mayor for your direction and your leadership on this. And at this point, I will yield the floor back into your hands for further direction as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank each member of the task force for the hard work you've done, the diligence and the commitment, again, the passion you have for one another, for the community. You know, it's interesting to me that when we started this, we really wanted, again, to be active listeners, to really facilitate conversation, to establish, to bridge those maybe divisions between the community and police. And really, that the task force would exemplify the vision of what we're trying to get to, the positive feelings that we have towards the work, the understanding of how serious it is, the commitment we had to this, the ability to listen, and that changes were made, as we heard through the process. That was really the hope, I think. And again, it does need to continue on. And I go back to, you know, something Reverend Carter, you know, mentions, and that is that this is a continuous effort. And it's not just, this was just about police-community relations, but it extends to so many different aspects of the social fabric that we really need to heal. And I will say that my experience on the task force has been kind of an image of what I want for everyone to experience. The positive regard that each task force member had for one another and for those who came forward really does exemplify the vision of what is in store for us if we will engage the conversation with respect and honesty and commitment and passion. There is, as we said, more work to do. And I will just identify some of the things I think we need to continue to work on. The task force, we had set this date as a time for the task force to give a report. And as we got into it, realized this is much broader and there is more work to be done. And so the task force has graciously offered, members have offered to continue on into the new year. We want to continue this on, but our ultimate goal is to institutionalize this conversation, regularize it. It's got to continue on. In what capacity and what agency we do that is still under discussion. We're trying to figure that out. But there are more things to discuss. And if it's not the task force, I don't want to presume upon your time and commitment for too long. So I thank you for your commitment to continue on for the near term. But there are more that needs to be done. We've already discussed. We need to, it's great that there is a place now on the website that you can go and land a complaint. That's important. But there are other ways in which citizens need to know, how do they seek redress of grievances? What is the process for different ways? And we want to do a presentation, have a presentation of the District Attorney Dupree, the Community Integrity Unit. You know, how does that function? What is the process? What are the results? What else is missing? Are there gaps in those kinds of things for people? Are we duplicating? We want to kind of lay this out there and make it available to the public to see. We have a request from the Metropolitan Organization to counter sexual assault to meet with the task force, to talk about some of their specific concerns. So that is a topic for the task force. Certainly, we have to look at recruiting and hiring and promotion so that we can achieve, the force, the law enforcement, can better reflect the diversity of our community. That has to be a goal of ours for our community. And we have to explore that to see what more can be done, what needs to be resolved there. I think we need to have a serious conversation, as Chief York and Sheriff Ash mentioned, about wellness. Because, you know, police officers, as Monsignor mentioned, are asked to do in way too much. That we're asking them to be at a protest when they're being protested and to protect us during a protest. And that's a recipe for disaster. Yet we haven't had that because of, I think, the relationships. But we've got to look at, how do we care for officers who truly desire to be of service? And encourage that and provide them with the resources, the psychological resources, the peer resources they need to continue to carry that forward. So we have more work to do, the task force does. But, and I think the long, the primary objective now is, how do we institutionalize this discussion moving forward? It has to be a standing agenda item. Whether this is carried on by the Law Enforcement Advisory Board as a standing agenda item, that maybe we, that the commission would continually ask these kinds of questions. Because what I, my experience has been, because of working with the members of the task force, is there is a tremendous generosity of spirit to be open and honest and to look at these and to let the emotions flow because they are real, they are necessary, but they reveal to us what is at stake. I will say the one disappointment, if I had one disappointment, it was we had really asked for and sought out individuals to tell their stories of their encounters with police. And what we did not, and I want to thank, again, Curtis Smart for telling his story. But the issue is that when there is this lack of trust, and people who've had these experiences may not feel comfortable coming forward with those. And so our hope was that when we heard those stories, that would bring the urgency to each task force meeting. And that did not happen, but that's not mean we can stop there. We have to find a way for those stories to come forward because they will reveal to us patterns that we say, oh, well, there's a pattern here that we have to look at and we can address that. But until we have multiple experiences coming to us, we may not be able to discern those patterns. So we have time now for questions and comments. And again, if any of the members of the task force have additional things they want to express that came out, please do so. But now I just turn this over for the commission.
Mayor, I see Commissioner Ramirez who had his hand up and Commissioner Bynum, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez?
Yeah, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Johnson. I want to thank the entire task force for all the work that they did. We all know 2020 has been a year that has been very hard on us, let alone having a pandemic, but having racial inequity come out. And so I thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Johnson, for heeding the call of the people who are wanting change and coming together. It's something that the community will be very happy to see. And then, Yurili, I could not have said it better. The recommendation you gave, that is something very important and something I continue to strive for is having open communication with all forms of our government. And so thank you for your words that, like I said, couldn't have said it any better. Chief York, I just have a couple of comments on some people and then a closing statement. Chief York, I thank you for your wanting to create a duty to intervene policy that will make our police department even much better and greater for having that. And so thank you for taking that step and listening and continuing to listen. And so thank you for taking that step and listening and continuing to listen and act with the community. That means, that means a lot to me. And then Dr. Hill, I thank you for all that you do and you've done. And I, to the recommendations you give, I do support. I would support us looking at more bail reform and reforming our no-knock warrant. I do have a question on that if Chief York or Sheriff Ash can answer pertaining to our no-knock warrant. Is that something we do here? Is that something that's regularly used?
Commissioner, no. So the only time we would use a no-knock warrant would be when someone is in there as a hostage. That would be, we don't do no-knock warrants on, you know, barricaded subjects or narcotics search warrants, anything like that. There's, we do not do anything when it comes to no-knock warrants.
Okay, that, thank you for that. That, again, that makes our Public Safety Department even greater for taking that step and not engaging in that. And so I just, that's something we can still continue to look at and just make sure that we're doing the best that we can in that matter. And I, and especially thank you, Monsignor Swetland, for kind of giving us and holding us as county commissioners, as a governing body, as a local government accountable for what we are supposed to do. That means, that means a lot to us because then that shows that the community is watching us and the community is wanting to ensure that our government is doing everything we can to ensure our citizens are safe and being taken care of. And to Mr. Mayor, from words that you had said, I would like to see and make a request that this task force be permanent, a permanent form of our government. Or because as Monsignor Swetland had mentioned, we have, they may not be here in our city, but we have longstanding issues of racial inequity and distrust between community and our police. And once we become stagnant and think we've done the work, more happens. This is something that constantly can change. There's always something that we can do better. And so I thank you for that and I hope we can continue to have these conversations and hopefully make this task force permanent in some way, shape, or form. Lastly, of overall, thank you to our Public Safety members. Every single one of you who devote your time and sacrifice your life and your time to this county and every, and protecting it, especially during this time of COVID and the pandemic, thank you for everything that you do. Thank you, Sheriff Ash. Thank you, Chief York. You are making our community much greater and safer for it. So thank you for everyone who did all of the work and I hope that we continue these conversations.
Thank you. Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief York, I did not know that you were planning to retire. So to you, I just want to say congratulations on your retirement. But moreover, I want to thank you for your decades of service to us and also how responsive you've been to me and I'm sure other commissioners. When I reached out to you, either to share something with you or ask a question. And I also want to say thank you to you because for what I observed to be the openness that you brought to this task force work. I did watch most of the sessions. And to Sheriff Ash, I just want to say amen and thank you for vocalizing your support for officer wellness. I did work several years here for our Community Mental Health Center. And since then, here, my time on the commission, I've had many opportunities to bring welcome remarks to the department's crisis intervention trainings that are held with the law enforcement and public safety folks. And on both sides of that spectrum, the community and the public safety side, I had the honor of hearing so many personal stories. And I can tell you, people are hurting. And Mr. Smart, I just want to say thank you for sharing the story that you told during one of the task force meetings. I think we all needed to hear that story. And I'm just asking everyone to be mindful of what the community is experiencing, but not only that, the incredibly difficult job that our public servants are doing, and I think we've said that multiple times throughout our time together tonight. But not only that, just the hardships and the biases that are experienced by our community members. I really do believe continuing this conversation can be helpful on both sides of that spectrum. And just thanks to all of you on the task force for giving your time to this effort. It's really appreciated. I've appreciated all that you've done and all that you've said, all that I've heard and learned, and especially what you brought us tonight. I just have a quick comment. I did not hear the voices of the FOP members of the police or sheriff among this experience yet so far. And if we do need to review and change contracts, which may very well be true, I would just ask that we please include those folks in our conversations, that we seek those solutions collaboratively as our first method of approach. Mayor, I would put forward the Standing Committee that I chair, Public Works and Safety, as a location for this item to be a standing item. Currently with our Administration and Human Services Standing Committee, we have a standing item on our CARES Act funding. So I just offer that if you believe that might be a good place for it. And finally, I would just say I'm ready for our continued constructive, engaged conversation. And I'm ready to help be a part of our path forward to the greatness that Pastor Carter knows is on our horizon. So thank you all so very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I want to commend you for taking the proactive approach to organize the task force, to Commissioner Johnson for agreeing to co-chair it, but to each and every one of the members of the task force that we heard tonight. I've been taking copious notes on all of this. I want to say that several of the members talked about the peaceful way in which protests were conducted in KCK. And that says a lot for our citizenry and also for the police officers and any members of the Sheriff's Department who sought to make that happen. Freedom of speech is vital. The community was protected. So it's great to see that level of justice regardless what your side of the coin was. Since we don't have a lot of time left, I do want to say I'm happy to hear that the task, because one of the things you mentioned, Mayor, is that the task force was to bring recommendations that are going to improve the relationships between the community and our Sheriff's Department and the Police Department. But this is going to be an ongoing situation, so I'm glad to hear that that's going to happen. But for the brief time we have left, I do want to get a little bit more clarity about a couple of particular issues that Chief York mentioned. And one had to do with the duty to intervene policy. Not clear when that goes into effect. I understood him to say that there is a ten code and I had to think back to some of the TV shows to understand what that meant, but I get it. But what exactly at this minute is the position of the duty to intervene policy with our department?
Commissioner, I would say we are working on the policy now with the legal department. That just has to be finalized. And then we are going to do a, immediately we're going to go to roll calls and train the officers. So to give you a timeline, I would say it will be up and running by January of '21. So I, that's probably, you know, I think I'll be ready before that. But to be practical with the holidays, I think the PowerPoint and the policy will be done in the next couple of weeks, first of the year. And then every year from there, we're going to be teaching it to the officers in service and obviously training it to the, to the new recruit officers, scenario-based training on duty to intervene. So I hope that answers your question in a couple of weeks.
But what is the position of duty to intervene then?
So we have been talking about it with the officers. They know about it. So the position is you have, you must intervene. If you see any type of misconduct or an officer getting overly excited, it's mandatory that you intervene. So that's been my position all along. And we've been talking about it with the officers and they know about it. And I'm confident that between now and the policy, we're going to, we're going to be right there when it comes to intervening.
Commissioner, I think we lost.
Is there until there you're having?
Commissioner, you keep cutting out.
Can you hear me?
We can, but it goes in and out. We're not hearing you, Commissioner. Okay, I think we may have lost Commissioner Townsend. Let's come back, she'll come back on in the meantime. Let's, Commissioner Philbrook.
Yes, I, there's been so much said tonight that rings so true for me that it would be hard to nail it all down, which is why I also took copious notes. And I appreciate the hard work for the task force and the people stepping forward to use their, their love of our community and the fact that they really do have the integrity and the devotion to the safety and wellness for our community. That takes a lot of intestinal fortitude and a lot, a lot, lot, lot of devotion. So having said all that, I do have to say that I have to apologize as an individual living in this community and been here for seventy-ish years. And I will tell you that I have to apologize. Yeah, I see Reverend Carter laughing at me. Yep, you got caught. But the point being is, is that I lived here a long time and I saw some of the things that we're talking about. And I was, I don't know that I have an excuse, okay? I just, I didn't step forward on the, these things earlier on. And so I owe a big apology to our community as just another human being living here. And I want to, I, I thank you for giving me the opportunity now to step up to the plate and be part of the solution for some of our issues. So thank you very much.
Well, unfortunately, I don't see Commissioner Townsend back on. And our time is, has run out, but we will follow up with Commissioner Townsend and make sure that any question she has will be answered. Again, I want to thank everyone for your commitment of time and passion. And that's what it takes, your openness and generosity, the members of the task force. It has been an inspiration to me personally. And again, I want to offer a very special thanks to Commissioner Johnson. Harold, you are a rock star.
If only I knew how to turn my microphone on and off, but other than that, thank you, Mayor. It's been a pleasure serving in this capacity. I hope that everybody can appreciate the seriousness of the issue that we're, that we're dealing with. The community is going to help keep us honest and I think that we need that. I look forward to a bright future in Wyandotte County. I do think we're right on the precipice of something great that is not only going to be told in terms of an economic way, but also in a social way that will be reflected in all of our community. So thank you again, Mayor, for this opportunity.
Okay, well, that concludes our special session. We will reconvene at seven o'clock for our full commission meeting. Thank you all.